Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council have come to order. Roll call.
Skerries, here. Joseph Jones?
Here.
Mike LaFredo?
Here.
Mike Jones?
Here.
Trace Harms?
Here.
Thank you, folks. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Skerries?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 2007, amending the code of ordinances to further define surfaces allowed for parking on private property and to add parking prohibitions for vehicles on private property for the purposes of sale. Move to open the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call.
LaFredo?
Here.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mark, have you heard anything coming in or seen any emails or anything on this particular item?
No, I have not.
Any public comment to... Whitney, do you see anybody looking to come in?
No one is in the waiting room. I don't have any chats either. I've hit unmute.
Okay. Hearing nothing and having nothing on file, I move to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Get a little time delay here on all of this, so we'll hang in there. Okay, roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Trace Harms?
Yes.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the first reading of before-mentioned ordinance. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion that council would like to have? Hearing non-roll call.
Trace Harms?
Yes.
So Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than what's on the agenda. Will take no action. State your name, address for the record, and please no more than five minutes.
Matthew Weir, 6501 Allison Avenue. Just kind of want to follow up. I reached out to the city council last week about construction projects, specifically ours, but in general going on. We are, I believe, a month and a half to almost two months behind on our street. And last week, the week before, we had about two to three days of half-days of work on our street, not getting a lot of answers. And one of the concerns I had, I reached out about, was that when we do contact the city through Facebook or something like that, we are just simply sent to the engineer. Nobody from the city seems to be following up on these projects and why they are getting so far behind. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up to the attention of the city council, and hopefully we can get these projects back on track and at least get some better communication coming to the residents that are affected by these.
Thank you.
So Dave, in talking about that, I guess we can talk about it now, so that way it can be discussed now or it can be addressed during city council comments.
Well, I do know that we have meetings on every Friday, and we've instituted the city council meeting on Friday afternoon so that everybody can be on the same page effective starting this Friday. I do know that. Matt, I'm sorry you haven't gotten many answers. I... We usually refer a lot of the stuff on the construction projects because they have somebody out there all the time. And if it hasn't been satisfactory, then we'll have to take a little harder look. Justin, are you on?
I'm on. Do you hear me? I'm driving.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we hear you. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, have you got any comments or any information on Allison that Mr. Weir would like to hear?
We are paving on Wednesday at 11 o'clock.
If I may, my name is Benton. I, 6518 Allison. I also have directed questions. I've also directed my disappointment in the way this has been handled. I do not blame the contractors. I blame the city for this. I blame the city council for this for not staying on top of them, for not letting us know what's going on. Being so far behind, we had two rain days since this began. We've had two rain days. We've... I took a week off to do some work around my property here, and not one person showed up to work on this street. I've been in the construction industry my entire life, and I've never seen anything rain like this. It is not our responsibility, in my opinion, to get ahold of a contractor, to ask them why they're not working. You guys hired them, so it's your responsibility to stay on top of it. That's where our tax dollars goes, to pay you guys to do this, not for us to do this. If you can't tell, I'm very upset about this, and I've tried to bite my tongue, but I just... I'm just... You know, part of this is if we're this far behind, the other half of our street is going to be even that much farther behind, and this could pull them into the winter months. And this affects my entire street and all my neighbors, and we are a very close-knit community here. We work very hard to be together. We've had great support from our police department here, our fire departments here. We're all proud to live in Windsor Heights. This is a huge disappointment to me and many of us on this street.
Sir, can I get your name? I didn't copy the... I didn't... I wasn't able to write down your name.
My name is Benton, B-E-N-T-O-M McLaren, M-C-C-L-A-R-A-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Asking a question about the timeline. Went back and looked, and it looks like in May of 2019, we had a timeline that was provided to us that had the project completion dates for all three of the projects, that being College, 69th, and Allison Avenue timeline. That was set for November 15th of 2020. And so we were provided an email recently that said that more or less it was going to keep with that timeline. Justin or Dalton, is that accurate?
Yes. Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, some of it has slid. There's been private utility work that was completed that held them back. 69th Street, there's power poles, a buried old gas line that nobody knew about, and the location of the gas. For Allison, the gas services were too high, so those had to be lowered. So that took probably two weeks or so for Mid-American to get in to lower all those. So those were... Once those were done, they were able to start work again.
Those were done... Those were done a month ago. I remember the Friday that they finished that, and still there was nobody on our street.
Well, and I...
I guess it doesn't matter to me what's happened in the past. This... We need to keep moving forward with this. There were people working today. I am not happy about any of this. I feel like, you know, because of all the other projects that were more important and took precedence over ours, the bridge, University Avenue down by the park, that we were just kind of forgotten because we're a little bit less important, a little bit more insignificant as far as the project goes. And if that's the case, it's my experience that if people are too busy and can't complete it by a timeline that's in a contract, then whoever hired them has the opportunity to hire somebody else to finish the work and backcharge the original people. Now, I'm not saying we should backcharge anybody, but this has been ongoing for so long. I got emails here, and I voiced... My wife and I have both voiced our disappointments in this. It's my understanding that this was expected, weather permitting, to be done by the second week of July. We're going to be out of August before this is done on our section. And I just... I don't know. I'm very disappointed, and I find that unacceptable. That's just me.
Mr. McLaren, I appreciate your comments, and I think that it's just know that you're not the only one that's been frustrated with this. I know from the city council's perspective that we've been asking questions and asking to improve our communications, and so this is something that's been a regular question that I've asked at council meetings to continue to improve our communication, that what are we doing to communicate with the residents, in particular on these streets? So I live off of College, which is another street under repair, and I know from communications, regular communications with folks over there that also the lack of communication, people didn't even know when it was starting on the off-streets. I live on one of those off-street streets and have never gotten a communication from the city, and I sit on city council. So one thing that I would just say that I think is consistent throughout is that we need to do a better job communicating, and it's not an excuse. I want you just to know that I recognize that this is a problem, and I'm hopeful and optimistic that our staff can work with us and our contractors can work with us to make sure that, one, we do a better job of getting back on track, and, two, most importantly, that we do a better job communicating with residents about what is going on. And the mayor had indicated earlier that they're going to start doing a Zoom meeting at 2:00 on Fridays. Well, that might work for some people, but I know it doesn't work for probably the majority of folks to be able to jump on a conference call at 2:00 on a Friday afternoon. And so I certainly hope and appreciate that we are going to also provide something in writing. I did receive no feedback on that communication that I sent, requesting if we were also going to be doing something in writing better than what we've been doing in a newsletter once a month. There needs to be weekly communication on each one of these streets on what the residents can expect and what the next phase is in the timeline so that they can maintain a hope through this construction period and processes that it will be taken care of in a timely manner and that we're on top of it, that we know what's going on, and we can communicate that to our residents. So I appreciate you guys bringing this forward because without... I don't live on Allison. You used to live on Lincoln, but that... We don't know if we're not in your neighborhood every day, what's going on, so we really appreciate you bringing these concerns forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Trace, what happens with folks that are elderly and are not on any kind of social media? How are they told?
Right, very good question, and that's another thing that we've consistently brought up, and unfortunate, one of the things that I continue to be frustrated with is that we will send the newsletter to people who have requests a mail copy to, but we used to, you know, do more regular communication to folks. And so one of the things that I asked about when we first started and engaged with these processes is how are we going to regularly communicate with the residents? And I was told that there would be information that are brought to residents' doors, like we've done in past projects and that sort of thing. And so I'm an advocate for, and I will ask Justin and our Bolton and Meek, who are engineer contractors, to help develop a plan that will be a regular communication, not via... We need to have a tool that's available to everybody, not only via somebody who has a internet connection. This last week, we all struggled because we didn't... Some of us didn't have internet for a week, right? And then some of us don't have reliable internet otherwise. So when we get to that situation, how can we make sure the people have access to the information? And, you know, I'm born and raised Farmfield, Iowa girl, and I'll tell you, sometimes you've got to go back to the brass tacks of a hand-delivered note, and we got to figure out a better way to communicate that, whether it's via the postal service or dropping something off on each one of those blocks.
Thank you. Yeah, we try and tell the folks around us that are elderly what's going on, just so they know, so.
Greg Sterns would like to talk. Thank you, folks, for your comments, and we'll see what we can do.
Dave can hear you. Dave?
Can I let Greg talk first before you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Yeah, thank you. This is Greg Sterns, and I also live on Allison, and I have a couple questions. When was the last time someone from the city came and saw the work sites? We've been walking to our cars for several, several weeks. We have almost no way to get off our property because of the mud piles that are up against a fence that all our neighbors have to walk through, and I don't begrudge them for walking. They have to get from their house to their cars. But it is not acceptable. There's been nobody on the streets, no worker, nobody, for weeks at a time. And I had a $75 car repair bill today because I parked my car in the street because a mouse built a nest in my engine block. It wouldn't happen in my garage.
You know who we are.
It's just not acceptable, and I would ask that somebody please, that members of the city council, the mayor, somebody from who has authority and that's writing a check, will come and walk the streets of the construction areas, not just our street, but the other ones too, to see what residents are putting up with. Please.
Thank you, Greg. Mike?
Mr. Sterns, can I get your address, please?
Yeah, it's 6517 Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get on?
You have a comment?
I'm on, sure. Clarify me, are we talking about a lack of communication? Because I think I see that. I know I see that. There's not enough regular communication to give updates about the projects. They could almost be daily, I think, rather than periodically. And so I think communication has been lacking. I think people can understand if something occurs to slow down the project, if they're aware of it. But when they're not aware, I certainly agree with the folks that are issuing their concerns because I don't think they're totally aware of any problems that occur along the way. So I want to talk about this further later, but yeah, I think communication has been lacking.
Going back to the last two comments, and then also what Justin mentioned about the Mid-American, the Mid-American gas lines only took a few days, you know, maybe four days, and half that time, they were up on the section of road that wasn't getting any construction work done. The street then sat for over two weeks without any construction being done, and no contractors even showing up and looking at the street. And that's... I think we're in a... A lot of us got really frustrated, staying there for, you know, several, a couple of weeks and not seeing any progress. And even since then, we haven't had hardly a full day put in here.
Turn the audio off and on.
Justin, can you give some sort of indication? You're responsible for managing these folks. I know you mentioned earlier about that, you know, the delays and whatever else. So, I mean, we're hearing from multiple residents here that there were many days with no work going on, so what do the contractors have to say about that, or what do you know, and how can you ensure that this doesn't happen moving forward? Because I do agree with these folks that we need to move forward. Looking backwards isn't going to help us at all, but maybe that'll help us figure out what we can do to make improvements and move forward.
So what happens with things like that, with the Mid-American comes in, they give us a schedule, they say they're going to be there a certain day, then they don't come in for another couple of days. The contractor has people to put to work, so a lot of times what happens is they get sent off to another job site to finish something up, and then they come back. So sometimes that delays, yeah, they get... Mid-American might get done, but then a couple of days might go by before somebody actually gets in just because they're off somewhere else doing stuff. So that's kind of part of the reason for them, not making excuses for them, whatever, but that's generally what happens, is that some of those workers get shifted off somewhere else because they can't sit around for a week or so, or whatever many days they're working. So that's kind of what happens with that. It's kind of a domino effect when things like that happen, they're unforeseen, but they're pushing as quick as they can. A lot of times, it just... Things happen, I guess, so... And I can't control... I can't control when they come in or not. They're giving a specific date to when they're supposed to be done by, so they just have to be done by that date.
Dry in their seat.
Justin, I'm going to jump in here for a second.
Whitney, is there a way that you could mute anybody who is like not talking or doesn't have their hand raised? Because I'm getting multiple comments and feedback from people, and I can't hear who people are talking in turn.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and mute everyone, and if you would like to comment, please make a note in the chat, and I will unmute you that way.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Weird.
So you might have noticed that we started all these projects, all three of these streets that we're talking about right now, we started them in the lowest point. And the lowest point is always the most difficult to construct in, both because water runs down the roadbed, and so it takes significantly longer to dry out, and because the storm structures and pipes that we put in at the bottom are quite a bit larger than they are uphill. So it's a little disheartening to see it. I definitely hear you guys, but the next phases, there are significantly less identified conflicts. The structures are smaller. They'll dry out faster because there's going to be existing storm for things to drain into. So moving forward, it will be better. I'm sure you're thinking, yeah, of course you're going to say that. I mean, it's just a fact of the matter. We started all these projects at the bottom of a hill, and so it's, you know, we started with the most difficult areas, and we're moving up to the easier spots to do. I'd also like to add that we do do weekly updates for all the projects. We summarize what's been done and what's going to be done the following week. Those updates can be found on our website. And if you'd like, I can follow up with you, Mr. Weir, Mr. Sterns, and I think it was Benton, I can follow up and give you guys a link to that. If you have been reading those and you're unsatisfied with the content in those, I do appreciate the feedback. I'd just like to know, you know, just more specifically what it is that you guys would like to see in that, because I think that what you're requesting, we're getting out there. It just might not be getting into the right hands. In regards to getting the message to the residents that don't use the internet, we make every attempt to accommodate as much as we possibly can. And so if there's a resident that doesn't have access to the internet, we will certainly mail them. So we had open houses for these projects, and nobody made comment that that was something that they needed. If it's something that you guys would like to have for your neighbors that aren't on the internet, please feel free to put them in touch with me, and I will make that happen for them, certainly. And then, Mr. Sterns, I couldn't quite catch what you said it was about your vehicle damage, but if you've got damage to your vehicle as a result of the construction project, please, please, please send a claim or your bill or whatever it is onto the city so we can see what exactly happened, because it is not our intent to put you guys out money because of a construction project. That's obviously not acceptable.
Greg, you got a question in here. I can't answer. Wendy, unused construction equipment will be out of the way, but I can tell you that we are starting tomorrow. We'll be working east of 70th Street, so we'll get to you as soon as we can with the debris removal. Everything is all cleared by the end of the month.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and we've requested the contractor to follow us through as we pave these streets and get the first round of storm debris. We realize that people aren't done cleaning up, but we're going to make our first round through these streets as paving operations are done. So today, we got door hangers up on 69th Street. We'll be getting communications out tomorrow for Allison. College is getting picked up on Wednesday around 1:00. So I don't want you guys to think we're leaving you high and dry. Like I said, we're making absolutely every attempt we can to accommodate as much as we possibly can.
Anything further in this, other than we've got a lot of work to do?
Well, is this the time that we're going to be talking about what Ms. Harms and I requested on the agenda, about the communication that is not on the agenda, the communication of the construction projects? Is this completely where we're talking about this? Because I found out a lot of questions or a lot of answers to questions that I had just by sending a question about a next-door post, had no idea these things were happening on 69th Street, asked another question a week prior about university, and found out that now university's timeline might not be what the timeline was. So city council is not really being kept up to date on this information, and both Ms. Harms and I requested this to be on the agenda tonight, and I do not see that this is on the agenda.
She's wanting to get something done.
I think part of the resultant of what you were asking will be taken care of on Friday at that meeting, Susan. That's why we are holding it.
Okay, so you're missing the point. Everything that I have sent, I don't know what is going on as a city council member, and I'm asking questions, and I'm not getting the answers to the questions that I am asking. I also asked to have this on the agenda, as did Ms. Harms, and it's not on the agenda. These were questions that we had.
When we get to comments by council, we will go over that, okay?
Nobody not answered the question about why this couldn't be on the agenda. It was requested by two council members, and our protocol and procedure is that it would be on the agenda. Who didn't put it on the agenda? That's what I want to know.
Well, I guess, Trace, I guess it's me. I didn't catch on that we had two requests for all of that. I've been kind of busy with this debris stuff, so I'm sorry about that. We'll try and make that up, but let's talk about it for sure on Friday at the meeting. If you can't be on the meeting, we'll make sure that you get all the information that was on... will be on it.
Well, I will be honest with you.
I'll take the blame for that.
That will happen.
Quick aside here. Ms. Harms, you had mentioned that you would ask for some feedback on something, some sort of written communication or something. What were you referring to?
So I sent an email, and I don't... And I can't tell you what day it was this last week, requesting, and I apologize because I don't have the email in front of me right now, but just suggesting that it was in response to the email about the Zoom, the 2:00 meeting on Fridays, that, first of all, that... I mean, I think that's fair, but at the end of the... At the end of the day, most people are probably going to be able to participate, and then so what's our response, and are we going to be able to have some... What are we going to have in writing available to people and get that out in a timely fashion? And, you know, I appreciate Dalton's point about, you know, they have updates on the website, but people are not finding them. They don't know. There's not a communication that that's there. It's difficult to find. We need to do a better job. Our bigger issue is communication, and we have failed miserably, not only with the construction projects that we're in the middle of, but in the middle of this, our current disaster situation, we've failed miserably. And I continue to get, you know, updates twice a week from communities that surround us, and I don't live in their city. So I just am frustrated, and I appreciate Dave's attempts at trying to get some communication out there after we requested it, but it's clear that we don't have a good plan, not only on how we're going to deal with our construction projects or when we are dealing with a disaster in our community. And we've got to do a much better job communicating with our residents in all of these situations. We had mixed messages out there, had people sending me emails and Facebook questions and texting me, trying to understand what was going on because the communication wasn't clear. And so I think it's unfortunate. Because we were putting out mixed messages and information that wasn't clear about when pickup times are and what day... No, it wasn't, Dave, and I'll show you multiple messages from residents. And I'll show you multiple messages from residents where they were confused and they didn't.
Please forward them off to me then, because I I know for a fact that when that got changed to Saturday for the uh yard waste pickup, it was publicized out as best we could get it out. And the same thing with regular garbage pickup being on Friday.
I also received the text messages, emails, and people stopped by my house asking. So I confirmed, I made a clarification email that I sent out. I just want to clarify this, that trash pickup is still Friday and it's just composted on Saturday. Because there were people that were confused. I read it the first time, thought I understood it completely. I read a second message and then thought, maybe I'm off and maybe I told people the wrong thing. So that I actually sent you an email that asked for clarification because I hadn't received. So.
Did you get a response on that?
I think so.
Yes.
But the fact of the matter is, people were still confused. I had to send out an email asking for clarification. Not that you didn't, not that, I mean, it could have been out there. And the fact that people are confused, that means that we did not communicate effectively.
I guess, Susan, I guess the definition will have to be explained that garbage is garbage and yard waste is compost.
No, you're missing the point.
Make that a little more explicit. I'm sorry.
Anyway. On communication, epic fail on communication of both of these projects right now.
Okay, public forum is closed. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
No, I wasn't done, Dave. I I wasn't done.
All right, sorry, Mike, I passed over you, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, just to sort of close this thing out, um, addressing the street projects, it it sounds to me, um, I'd still, Theresa, if you could find that email, I'd I'd like to see it. Um, with regards to, you know, these written communications. Um, it it sounds to me like w- we need to do a better job of actual boots on the ground because we are not being provided information. There are things that we do not know, uh, and therefore we cannot provide that to residents of this community. Uh, and I I addressed this last week and I said that, you know, um, putting something together for university and actually taking it out there on the ground and giving it to people. I think um if other uh council members would accept that challenge for each one of these projects and um we would actually go out there and deliver this information to s- to these residents of each street. Uh, to make sure that they understand what's going, what is going on. Um, I would certainly welcome that conversation. It's not like a formal action or anything, that's more of a, um, you know, going the extra mile to make sure these residents are are informed. And so I guess I'll uh I'll send an email or we can talk about that at a later time. That's it, thank you, Dave, sorry.
Thanks, Mike. Next item, consent agenda.
Dave, can I get in? I would like, I would like to be the third person that requested the communications we discuss tonight. I don't, I don't think there's a reason why we can't do it tonight when two people have asked that it be on there.
Well, like I say, I'm sorry we didn't put it on there to discuss it, but uh our intent was to do it when we get back to the uh back end, when uh council has their discussion points.
Dave, let me get back to that. I don't think it's too late to change.
Well, you wanna do it right now?
Well, at at some point, yes. I think, I think you've been uh inquired about that from uh Mrs. Harms.
We like to do with about communications and we've all seen what we put up on the web. We've all seen all the emails that go back and forth. Uh, we put it up on the website, we put it out on Facebook. It seems to be that the contractors are not getting the walking notices to the people that are out there on where they are on the project.
Let me, let me, let me cut in a little bit. Uh, I'm not, in my case, I'm not issuing blame anywhere, but I think the communication is definitely lacking. And I hear the folks really well. And so I don't think we wanna get defensive and it sure is the heck not the best way to get information from Facebook, uh, from people that are not in the decision-making process. So to alleviate that, I would suggest that there be a. Update at least daily and maybe more often regarding the status of these projects. Because it it, again, Facebook is, you know, there's a lot of misinformation put on Facebook, let's face it.
Do you get the updates uh from Dalton every week on the updates on each project?
Dalton, I do, but that isn't who it needs to go to necessarily. So you're, I I don't miss the point. I think it should be on the agenda and discussed somewhere along the lines tonight. Because I think there is a void in information given to the citizens, the residents, and.
My, my solution, again, um, is for each project, we come up with a condensed, one sheet piece of paper. Here's the timeline, here's what's going on, and that is physically taken uh to each resident on these streets.
Well, Justin, you catch that?
I'm not saying engineer. Like, I, we will do it. Like, I will do it.
And I will too, and this is no different than the last week that I spent cleaning up people's yards and and pulling trees from people, neighbors backs of yards and all over this community. And then helping people understand what was the debris pickup, driving through, asking people what they needed help with, um, moving things, doing all the, I engaged all my children. And they were, every one of them was out there doing storm cleanup, um, and helping people understand what, how this was going to, how they were gonna be impacted. So it's no different than doing that. We need to get out, um, to Mike's point, boots on the ground. Um, and um, I I mean, something I've done, I did, Susan and I, I know for sure did for the last week. And so I, it no different than what we're, what we've already been doing. Assign me a street, give me the information, make sure I have all of the information so I can appropriately answer questions. And I will do whatever street you want me to do, whatever day of the week you want me to do. And I, so I agree, we need to get out there, we need to make sure people are taken care of. You need to, um, I sent Dalton, I was out meeting with people, they brought other issues forward. I send emails at the, at those points in time when people bring up other issues on the street or other things to Chad and Dalton and others that need to be addressed. And um, so, and then they get them on their list and I appreciate you guys responding to those. Um, so I agree, Mike, but I think we, I think that takes care of the the issue at the this very moment. And then I I think we need to continue those as scheduled. It's not just a one, one and done, that it needs to be a continuous um communication with regular updates um to that community. And then anybody impacted by that, particularly the side streets that are closed or have limited access because of that. Um, I feel like we have forgotten them in this um effort. And so um, we need to not just be the people that are on the sh- on um, uh, that the construction's right in front of their house, but everybody that's impacted that because of closed streets and that sort of thing. So um, we need to think about it in a bigger picture and we need to think about it in the long term through the entire project timeline.
I I don't think we're hearing any uh disagreement, Theresa and Susan and Mike, but I would think we need a motion. Uh, so everybody's on board and it's formalized to do what people are suggesting because communication is lacking. So that's why I ask to go back on the agenda so that we can take a vote on it. I think we're in the public hearing thing.
I don't think we can.
Do that.
Yeah, this, Mike, this is Matt Brick. You've already approved the agenda and you haven't given notice of this, so that's not something you can do tonight.
Well, Matt, that's unfortunate when two council people requested it. Did you hear me, Matt?
I did, I don't think that's a legal question, Mike.
Well, it's not a legal question, but I.
Already taking responsibility for that, Mike.
I think my, uh, Matt, I think more so it's a common sense issue. And being a good representative of of the city. So that's what I think, uh, I'm not, uh, you're the attorney, obviously. But let's use some common sense here and handle it as Theresa has mentioned and Mike has mentioned. Let's just make that happen. I mean, the back and forth and the talking right now doesn't get the job done.
But, and Mike, to that point, nobody's saying that you guys can't just instruct staff to do that. What we're saying is, you can't do it via motion tonight.
Right, Matt, I understand what you're saying.
So whoever's the appropriate people, Whitney, Dalton, Justin, um, put together, um, and Chad, if, um, because of the public safety components too. Um, if those are intertwined, um, can you get together one page, no more than one page, front, back letter, um, with an update on each one of these streets? Let us know what, um, and give us the appropriate number and then assign um us, um, streets that we can, each construction project. Um, I'll do it with anybody, anytime. And go out there and um and assign us for whoever's willing to do it, whoever's willing to go knock the doors and answer questions um of residents. I think that this is well overdue and so I guess that would be the instruction at this juncture. So if you guys can get that done by um the end of this week, so that we can maybe start it over the weekend or get it out first part of next week.
Thank you.
Theresa, you're, Theresa, you're asking for a definite date. I hope of having this information given to council.
Well, I think that the, I I I think I've requested that by the end of this week, we need to have that information um available to hand out and take. I'd like to start doing it on Friday evening. People are.
You don't know why it can't be done sooner.
Well, I, i- if they can get it, the sooner they can get it done, the better. I was trying to, it's Monday, I don't know what's on everybody's docket and I know we're in storm clay up, but the sooner, as soon as it's ready, I'm ready.
Well, my my contention is that it is a priority right now.
Okay, guy, uh, Dalton, Chad, um, Whitney, how quickly can you get that information pulled together since you already have it?
Tomorrow before noon.
What time?
From the 50th, primarily street work on Dalton's side, but I'll work with him to to get it done.
Thanks, Chad. Dalton, what's your timeframe? Whitney, as the communications person?
Uh, I'd say probably tomorrow around noon. I'd have to talk to Justin to hammer down specifics of that, but uh noon isn't gonna be our goal.
Okay, fantastic. So tomorrow noon, we'll get and then get our assigned streets. That would be awesome. Can we also make sure um that you include with that contact information? I would have it for all uh city council members, the mayor, um, as well as um whoever's the appropriate person, whether it's you or the, or um whoever for Public Works. Um, or or Justin, whoever's, or maybe both of you, but make sure that every piece of communication has all of our contact information on it.
A question that I have, um, at Roosevelt, we used to, every Friday, we would get, hello, Rough Riders. And Mr. Biggs, the principal, would give us a two-minute dissertation on what happened throughout the week, what we can be expecting next week. Is that something that we can do here? Because we can kind of establish Sixty-Ninth Street people, we can establish Allison people, we can establish university people with numbers. And then we can send it, or we can give this automated message or whatever the case may be, we can send it to these people via their cellphone, which even the people who don't have social media. I'm gonna assume that they either have a landline or a cellphone. So that's another tool that we can use that it won't take much effort to, at our part, but it will at least keep the residents in the loop on things.
Let me.
I mean, that's our community, committee can come up with some additional recommendations. That's a great one, Susan.
I I think actually, from what I'm hearing, we're asking Dalton and Chad and Justin to come up with a list assigned to the council people. Is that what I'm hearing? I know, I, that's how I hear it. I mean, there's a lot of other things, uh, uh, Susan's thoughts are certainly worthy of consideration. But let's, let's, let's decide on what the first thing is that we want done.
I think the first thing is getting that letter put together, that they said they'll have mine noon, so by the, tomorrow evening, we can be out walking streets.
Makes sense, makes sense to me.
Hey, can we move on then?
Okay, Dave.
Next item is consent agenda.
Dave.
Yeah.
As long as everyone affected understands that that's gonna happen sometime tomorrow, that the council member is gonna receive.
I don't think it could be too much clearer, Mike.
Okay, well, I wanna make sure because I sometimes, Dave, think things are clear and they're obviously not. And I, the residents are feeling the same way. So anyway, that's my, that's my last two cents.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
We'll go.
Arms.
Yes.
Scaries. Yes, Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lafredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is a consideration of the pay request number four on Twenty Twenty Street Improvements Project.
So moved.
Second.
We'll go.
Scaries? Yes. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lafredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number four, College Drive Improvement.
So moved.
So, second, um, discussion, so just can, I know we're gonna get these written updates and I'm assuming that everybody will get every written update um on these, but anything. This is, again, something we asked for um to be discussed on the agenda is not only the communication, but also the updates on these projects. So I don't know if now is the time that that uh the Public Works team and engineering team wanna give updates.
Well, I don't pour concrete today.
Yep, I give a quick update if you got a second. This is Justin. Yep, they finished pouring concrete on that west half today, um, so it'll take a couple of days of cure. Then they'll start patching in the side streets and then the box outs for intakes and whatnots. Um, and then once those are able to get boxed out so they can drive heavier equipment on, they'll start with the sidewalk and driveways on the south side of college.
So I had, um, what if the neighbors ask questions so that um you were gonna transition to phase four? Can you i- i- verify that or not, um, or tell me where we are?
Yeah, so that was tossed around, um, due to phase four kind of being at the end, the contractor didn't wanna drive all those concrete trucks over top of it. So they're gonna transition into phase two, which is between, let's see, Seventy-Fifth and Seventy-Third. Um, water main's already done there, so they actually put them ahead of schedule by a week or so. So once, once we're able to get residents at least parking by their house, they're gonna start tho- that. And then they're gonna, once removals, that'll take a couple of days and then they'll start on phase three. Um, to jump ahead on there, because they're gonna have two pipe crews working on both of those, so we'll try to speed things up on that section. So that's kinda where, phase four, it will be at the end now.
Justin, I think, Justin, I I think that's maybe not uh heard by the affected residents.
Yeah, we haven't gotten those out because that was just decided here this last Friday.
Well, get it right out.
The res- residents on phase two were given notice, door hangers, that they would be, you know, work would be starting probably at the end of the month. And then the contractor will give them a week heads up before there have to be out there driveways.
Well, I I would, Dalton, I would, uh, or Justin, I'd say from one council person, and I don't, I think I would have support on this, get after it. Get it done.
Well, uh, the the one thing that I would add to this is so, um, or just a question, a clarification, so are we only letting the people on college know? Are you letting the people on through streets know?
Oh, we let the residents know.
The through streets know what's going on. Because I was on them. I was helping them clean up their debris all last week.
So no, because then generally we just do the, the, the residents that are affected as far as construction as with their properties right next to it. I mean, if that's something we want to start doing alongside for how far, I guess we'll have to decide how far down we tell those people.
I, this is something that I've brought up before, and this is something that I brought up before we started this project last October, November timeframe, that the folks on the streets also need to be aware because they're asking a hundred questions. It impacts their ability to, to get through and go where they need to, to go and, you know, and I am one of those side streets. And so it's, it's frustrating when, when people don't know what's happening or how they're going to have to change, or if they've got somebody doing delivery to their house and they can't even tell them that they don't know what that process is. It's very frustrating to be in this place of the unknown and, and not have a clue as to what's going on. We've got, we, yes, we do need to communicate with everybody who lives and accesses through that street.
Yeah, I, I would just, I, I would like to say that though, when we put information out, it comes from a single representative of the city as opposed to have five different responses, to have one that's accurate, put out to residents. And that, that's my thing. That's why I don't think Facebook is reliable. Some of it is, but you'd have to judge what's reliable and what's not. So.
So we, we can definitely do the letters to the side streets and stuff. Just keep in mind, we've got four streets under construction. So we'll be sending letters to probably close to a thousand addresses. It could be monthly. So or a thousand, I mean, there's probably a thousand affected residents on the side streets for 69th on Allison, because I, depending on where you want to stop on university and on college. So basically, and we're sending updates to the whole town, which is kind of why we were doing the, the e, e newsletter update and then as well as the weekly updates on the website. We can definitely look at expanding that. Just be mindful that it could be kind of expensive if we're going to mail all these out.
Say, say, I'd like to add one more thing. People that were connected to or are, were connected to MediaCom to, at least in my neighborhood, do not have land, being able to call out on their land phone, or they don't get internet service.
I can tell you both Century Lincoln MediaCom are working quite a bit to try and get that all resolved.
Dave, I'm not, I'm not arguing with that.
No, I know. I'm just making this statement.
They don't currently have it.
So Dalton, are you saying that once a month you would be sending out notices? Is this something that we as city council members could help save the city some money and walk a street? I mean, if you, we have four streets under construction, if we take it even, you know, three nights a week between, I don't know, if even only three of us can do it. If we're taking these notices and leaving them, I, I mean, at least they'll, they'll get the notices and we won't be, it won't be costing us that much money or you know, what, what other ways can we do that so that everybody is still getting the notice, but we don't have to worry about the costs?
Yeah, I guess this is kind of uncharted territories. This is highly unusual. So I will say that Windsor Heights is a highly unusual town. So whatever you guys would like to do, we will certainly make happen. Just I, I'm all in favor of communicating more and more and more. I don't know if you can ever communicate enough, but just be mindful that we're talking of well over a quarter of the town. If we start kicking it down every side street for every project. So I'm you know, open to suggestions. I don't really have an answer because this is, this is quite atypical. I've not seen this in the past.
Well, we're kind of in uncharted waters, would still have some outage. And, and so it's hard for everyone to receive information. I think at a later date, we could get one official response by the mayor that is the city response. So that, that's the only reason I think it's, there's people left without the ability to receive information on their computers.
Dalton, I'm happy to air my thoughts on what I think are the appropriate locations and how far you need to take that circumference. I don't think it has to be, I think it has to be. So if you're looking at college, I think every one of those side streets needs an update. So that yes, is seven, probably not 73rd because they, it doesn't impact their, you know, their ability to get in and out of their, their driveway or access their home. But it does on 74th and 75th and 76th and 77th and 78th and 79th and 80th and Maryland. And so, yes, I would say that, and that's your college avenue space, right? Those people need to know. Lewin Lane is up there too. And then, you know, Allison, so it would be anybody who's a direct, you know, that, that is directly impacted that in that space. And I'm Allison, I'm trying to, you guys have, is it 69th that dead ends there?
That's 64th, Teresa.
64th, okay, thanks. And then you guys are at, and then you have the dead end, right? So 64, okay, nevermind. So I.
My bad, 66.
66, right. Okay, same, 66. And so, you know, potentially those folks, but then Allison, I mean, I don't know that you have a lot of through, you know, that there's other folks that are necessarily impacted by Allison being shut down than, than those two, than those two areas. So I don't, I think that you're, that maybe you're thinking broader than it needs to be, but I think that those are the, that's what I'm talking about. I think college is very unique from that perspective and potentially as we get on university, those residents that are off of those off shoot streets similar to like college, when we get there, it, that has potential in those spaces too. Just my perspective. As you start getting, you start going further east on university.
Okay, where are we on the consideration of the pay request number four?
We have a motion and a second.
Are we done with discussion? It's the roll call.
Joseph Jones? Joseph Jones?
Getting my computer to work. Yes.
Sorry about that. Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Mrs. Garies?
Yes.
Next item is consideration or discussion on the wall of bank stabilization, public, private partnership. Dalton, would you point that please?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we've got Mr. Langness on. He lives up on Maryland Drive 76, oh, is it 7609, Mr. Langness?
That is correct. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just put my face up there too. Hopefully you can see it.
Good evening, sir.
This is my first, this is my first meeting I've participated in. So I, I can say you're all earning your pay tonight. Go ahead, Dalton.
So Mr. Langness noticed the work that we had done on Walnut Creek this, earlier this summer, over behind the DNR building and along along the trail. He reached out to me and expressed some interest and partnering with the city on doing a project very similar to what we've done and those two locations, as well as the location that we did in the spring of 2018, back behind his property on the city property. In the packet are some pictures. In the, the pictures have the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer pipe that runs through that area marked out with green paint. Creek, the creek is about seven and a half, eight feet away from that sanitary sewer pipe. But before we really continued conversations with Mr. Langness and explored what the best options would be to stabilize the stream bank in this area, we just wanted to make sure that it was the will of the council that we continue to do so because we, we could end up spending a little bit of time and money on getting some kind of a scope put together for engineering and looking into options to fix it.
Dalton, can you tell us what other areas in that? So even if you just give me the bank stabilization that needs to happen from, you know, moving forward from the DNR building to, let's just take it to college in that space. What other areas besides this spot do we have to, that we need, do we need to address? I know we just finished a bit of a project there. So tell us what, what do we have left to, to do some, to, to do work in that area?
Yeah, good question. It's also, before I answer that, I'm going to clarify that the city doesn't actually own any property between University Avenue and College Drive. And so it would be kind of a steep order to go in there and do work on those because it's a hundred percent private property. And to the best of my knowledge, there is no risk to public infrastructure in that area. But basically to answer your question, between Hickman Road and the College Drive bridges, a decent chunk of that needs to be stabilized. In particular, there's a few houses that are actually Clive Addresses, but their, their backyards back up to the creek. And they're looking at pretty sizable drop off. They asked me to and do a hundred percent city-led project on those. And there's no public infrastructure at risk. And it's hard to justify that, but last three projects that we did back there, the last three locations, we, we got cost sharing. Well, the last two, we got significant cost sharing. And then the first one that we did in 2018 was a result of emergency sanitary sewer repair. So I guess to answer your question, we'll have to do quite a bit of repairs, but this is definitely worth at least looking into if Mr. Langness is willing to come.
And Dalton, if, I mean, it, it sounds to me like that's a good idea. And if we didn't, then what could we be, be looking at down the road?
If we were to knock the project?
Yeah, I mean, what's the consequence of not working on this?
Well, I guess if I'm going to be completely honest, risk of failure on that specific section territory is pretty low in the near term. Even if we continue the road, it has, I, I can't, I can't think that it would, it would be at risk in the next 10 years. But Mr. Langness has graciously offered to, tentatively offered to commit some funds to this. So just before we went down the road, I wanted to invite and speak on it.
Dalton, you're kind of cutting out there a little bit, but I'll just give everybody a quick background here. We've been here in this house. Actually, my wife Carol's here as well. She's actually the title holder of the property. So I thought it'd be appropriate if she was on. But we've been in this residence for about 20, 21 years. And in those years, we have noticed substantial erosion on the creek area. And so have our neighbors to the east and the west. Our neighbors to the east are Bob and Tracy Willets, and they're equally concerned along with Tim Ekins to the west here on Maryland Drive. And so it's just becoming more of a concern. I'm just trying to be proactive and stave off any additional issues down the road. And in that regard, I realize the city's not made of money. Neither are we, but we are certainly willing to subsidize some of this and try to come up with some reasonable cost sharing arrangement to take, take some of the burden off of the city and getting this done, even though, even though it just affects city property at this point.
Jim, I think that, that's a generous offer that you made. And I would suggest to Dalton, they come up with a recommendation because like you mentioned, there's other properties that are affected. And so I, I think Dalton needs to give us a recommendation because maybe there is more than your property. As you mentioned, a couple that they need to be informed. Yeah. Available partnerships with regard to showing up that, that bank is available.
Yeah. I guess my recommendation at this time is if Mr. Langness hadn't approached it and said that he was willing to commit funds to it, I, I wouldn't even be bringing this to you. So if it was a hundred percent on the city, that, that would be a no-go for me. But because he's approached us, I think that really it's a it's something that you guys want us to investigate, I guess. Because to answer your question, we're going to have to do some investigating.
Yeah, and I think Dalton, I think it makes sense because we are, we are unaware of what proportion would be charged to the city and what proportion the homeowner So yeah, I think in my opinion, we should be a little bit patient and wait for a recommendation from you.
So my rough estimate, based on the unit prices that we got this year and in 2018 is that it would be about $80,000. And Mr. Langness, I don't want to speak for you on, in regards to the cost sharing ratio or arrangements. I'll, I'll pass it over to you here.
I did, you know, Dalton, as we talked, and Dalton, by the way, I should pass this on to everybody. He was great. He came out right away upon my request and really had some good thoughts and concepts on this whole thing. Obviously, he's been down this road before, which was quite helpful for me. But what I was thinking off the top of my head, and again, just off the top of my head, no, no, no definitive commitment, but probably do like a 50/50 partnership on this if we could. And, and in terms of our subsidy on it, we would probably funnel it through the Windsor Heights Foundation. If that would be acceptable to everyone. And but, but as, as we've talked, we, we need to see some, I'd like to see some more ideas on paper and and to get some input from, I don't know, an engineer or whatever, as to what the appropriate project would be. Hopefully we don't have to go to 80 grand. Maybe we can do something more limited, Dalton. Depending on what, what's going to be involved.
Very gracious off, offer. Appreciate that. Dalton, I think the council's probably spoken that we should do a little bit more looking on this and work in conjunction with Mr. Langness on that.
So I would also suggest that if this is something we would look to be doing with the Langnesses, that we also might want to have conversations with other Maryland property owners. And so not to bite off more than we can chew, but maybe we look at some sort of a cost share program like we've got with economic development and other things. And so that might be something to think about. And maybe this is something that Dalton, you can take to the public works committee and come forward with a recommendation on how we might move this forward. Using this as maybe our pilot project and looking at how we might be able to move that forward to continue to work together with our residents. We know that there are a lot of folks along the stream that are very, very worried about the bank's stabilization. A lot of them end up at my doorstep talking about it often. And so I would want us to be looking at this long-term. And again, maybe we can use this as a, an introductory pilot, but I, I would like to look for something more long-term that we could work with our residents to establish and, and better, better address the, the bank stabilization as a whole.
Let me get a little Jack if I can. I, I don't disagree with any you said, Teresa. But I think, again, Mr. Langness has been very generous in his offer. And I'll go back to asking for a recommendation and a little more research as Langness mentioned with regarding the cost and alternatives and so forth regarding his property. And he's, he's got a very generous offer. And we all should appreciate. But I think we need a little more information.
Dalton, is this something that grants are available for, or I don't know what else would be available for this, but is there anything else that would help reduce the cost to both, both parties?
No, if there was a risk to public infrastructure, an immediate risk to public infrastructure, we'd maybe be able to get some grants for it. The project that we did earlier this summer, we were able to get, I think it was 70, it was either 75 or 80%, 85% cost share on that because it, it directly impacted public infrastructure. But because this isn't, I'm not going to say it doesn't impact it, but the risk is a lot lower, the grants. I'm not going to say it doesn't impact it, but the risk is a lot lower. The grants, I mean, I can apply for grants, but it's kind of it's throwing sand in the wind.
And, and I think, I'm sorry, Susan.
Go ahead.
And I think we're not, you're not asking for a committal right now. I don't think anybody is, but you're actually asking, should we get more information?
Right.
What, what does that look like as far as, can you give me a, a monetary estimate on that?
I would probably have survey out there. It would cost a couple thousand bucks to have it surveyed. Survey wouldn't be able to be done until the, the trees dropped all their leaves. So it'd be late fall. After we had survey, we'd be able to calculate quantities, lengths, stuff like that, and just get a better idea of exactly how much like volume and mass material we're trying to move and shape. And then we can use those quantities to put together more accurate pricing.
Dalton, if I may interject, I think Jim made it very clear, I feel the same way, that with you, it's in capable hands.
I thank you.
We need to let you do the job.
Now I think the day is coming where we're going to have to start talking about a whole stream corridor stabilization plan. I know you guys are not, you know, can plan something to death, but Mr. Langness approached us. He's ready to do it. And that plan, I don't, I don't think it'd be ready to roll for a while. So I think this would be prudent to, to do if you guys wanted to. So if, if it's you guys' direction, we don't need a motion or anything to get survey done. It just, I'll report back later this fall after we've got survey done and got a little more information.
Sure. I, I think it'd be good for not only the council, but also the residents there.
Very much so. Very much so.
And Mr. Langness and I actually talked about getting his neighbors on either side and on this project. And he said that there is tepid interest at this point, but if you guys are on board, we can continue conversations.
I think there's a good likely that I could get them on board to participate, so.
I think it makes a lot of sense. And then I, I think that there's real opportunity, you know, along that you guys are obviously well respected on, on Maryland and, and you know, everybody. And so I think you're kind of in the charge will go a long way. So I appreciate you guys stepping up and your willingness to do some, some recon on this with the, the other neighbors. So thank you.
We'll do what we can.
So just to make sure I'm getting everybody on the same, or I'm, I'm hearing everybody correctly, we're going to have survey done on this, this fall and have some preliminary design stuff worked up and that probably won't be available until I would say December. Is that okay with everyone? Survey will be a few thousand dollars. Design will be a couple thousand bucks. There's not a lot to design in these things, but it, it should be stamped. So.
That's what I, that's what I understand, Dalton.
Justin, does that sound like a reasonable timeframe for survey and design?
Yeah, like you said, the best, easiest and fastest to do when the trees are, leaves are off the trees. So it doesn't take as long, but yeah.
Fast and easy to survey means cheaper, so.
Right, exactly.
And for what it's worth, we can help, we, we can help with that expense as well. Not that that's a material item, but we can certainly throw some money after that as well.
You're, you're very kind.
Well, we just, we just, we feel it's important and it's long-term. It may not impact us, but down the road sooner or later. And what'd you say Dalton, that sewer line's what, seven feet away, seven and a half feet away?
Yep.
That, you know, we've seen some substantial erosion. So I'm, I probably worry too much hence the white hair, but it, it's, it's going to be a problem sooner or later.
Hey Jim, quit worrying. You'll end up like me with no hair.
I hear you.
Hey, we survived the flood two, two years ago with five and a half feet of, of creek water in our lower levels. So, you know, we're just trying to be as proactive as we can, but we love our backyard. We love being on the creek, but it's like everything's coming down along the creek way and, and mother nature is changing every single year. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can.
Thank you very much.
Definitely. And just one more thing, Mr. Burgess, does, this isn't, and Mr. Langness and I spoke about it on site. This isn't a flood mitigation effort. It's, it's really a property protection thing.
Understand.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Anytime you want to come on, please do.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Dalton, Justin, you got your direction on that. Next item is consideration of resolution 202101 to waive fees for a community center for Hartland Youth Choir on October 25th, 2020.
Those to approve.
Roll call.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
James.
Sis Gereys?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Item is consideration of resolution 202102 line for the temporary policy of community center reimbursement through the public health threat of COVID-19.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
This wasn't in our packet. Are we able to just discuss? Because I don't have this in my packet. So I just want to make sure that I know what.
Yeah, this is Whitney. I can describe it a little bit. It continues our current policy of keeping the community center closed. This time that goes through September 9th.
So I have a question. Didn't we, didn't we give you authority to do what you needed to do? In the last, because I thought that was part of the, the, what we did a couple of weeks ago when we said to give this staff discretion to be able to do that. So we didn't have to bring it back every time. So am I missing something?
Um, I believe that the council gave discretion to allow refunds for any renters in 2020, but we had been continuing to extend the closure and have that approval at each council meeting.
Whitney, I think that isn't what is my, from what I'm reading, that isn't item D. It's about the Hartland Youth Choir.
Oh, I apologize. I had moved one step ahead.
Item D went all the way through. We, it's been passed. We were doing the consideration of 202102. You want additional information on the previous one on item D?
No, I, I, I don't, I'm with Therese. I don't have anything on the other one.
I was going to say in our paper packets, we don't have information on this at all. So. That's why I was asking my question, wanting to make sure that before things got voted on, we knew kind of exactly walk us through things.
Oh, I don't really understand what it is. I thought, like I said, I feel like, I thought we already did this. I'm confused.
So this resolution is just, it's extending the mandatory closure of the community center due to coronavirus. The resolution you guys passed at the last meeting gives the, the renters the opportunity to cancel. Whether or not we've closed the community center, it gives them the opportunity to cancel and receive a full refund of fees paid to date. We just, we want to keep the mandatory closure, a council item on each agenda. So you guys keep talking about it since it's so fluid.
Okay, that's fine. And I definitely want this on our agenda. I was just confused because it, it says for rental reimbursements due to the health threat. So, and because I actually don't have the documents, I was confused as to what we were doing. So based on what you said and the fact that I can't see it, I guess I would just, I would just ask that we move the, or we defer on this until we have a paper copy of it.
So if you guys defer, the community center will open up tomorrow.
Okay, so maybe it would be helpful. The, the resolution kind of has that boilerplate language. And then it also explicitly says that the the total amount reimbursed by the city for the period between August 19th, 2020 and September 9th, 2020 could reach 5,18250, not including credit card fees paid by the renter. And the resolution so much explicitly says that a temporary policy is approved to allow community center rental reimbursements until September 9th, 2020, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Mike, is that our next council meeting?
Probably send everybody a quick copy of this if you need it.
So I guess do you guys want to click, keep, keep a mandatory closure in place until September 9th? Or do you want to open it back up and let people have their events if they want to? That's really what this is asking. If you don't take action, then the, the resolution you passed last time is going to expire or the, the closure period is going to expire. And if people have events scheduled for tomorrow and they want to continue to have their event, they can have their event.
I, I, I think it's inherent in Mike's statement that he would, he's recommending that there be a motion for closure till September 9th.
And. Well, I wasn't, oh, I wasn't right. I was just reading what the, what the resolution. I'm, I am in support of the resolution, but I'm just telling you what it said.
Um, we're going to go ahead and send our kids back into classrooms before that period of time. Why would we not allow opportunity for people to have events?
Well, Therese, that, that depends on which school district you're talking about.
Yeah, we're, that's why I keep bringing that to you guys is we don't, I don't want any part of that conversation. That is on you guys. So whatever you decide is fine. We'll make it happen. Just, that's why we keep bringing it to you.
And I keep saying.
Copy of that in the email real quick. So did you want to table it or do you want to go forward with it?
Well, I think it's a double standard. We're, we, we can't discuss and vote on things that we don't have it on agenda, but we can discuss things that we don't have paper copies of and know what they see. I don't like it either way. So I am moving that we defer the agenda item.
What, what are the implications of that, Therese and Dalton and Whitney?
Well, I think according to Dalton, it just means that the community center would be, if people want to have their events, then they can have their event. They still have the option to cancel. It doesn't hold them, it doesn't require them to have the event. Dalton, how many events are scheduled that, that have not been canceled yet?
I'm going to defer to Whitney on that one.
Uh, only a handful in September. And then a handful in October. We've had a lot of cancellations.
Right. So before September, before September 9th, how many events are there that are still, that people are wanting to have?
I'm pulling up the calendar just a moment here. There are three that would be affected by this time period.
Okay. Say I want to have their events. I've, I mean, I went to an event today. People are social distancing. They're requiring masks, people to wear masks at their events.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass that or do we have just a motion to table it?
We had a motion and it's, we had a motion and second prior to Teresa's motion to table it.
Who made the motion?
LaFredo made the motion and Mike Jones seconded.
I didn't make a motion to table it.
No, you made a motion to approve it to begin with.
Okay.
So if you guys want to back it off, we'll table it or we can go ahead and have a roll call.
Oh, 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 cancel my motion.
Motion on the table then is table consideration of resolution 202102. How say you, council? Roll call.
Uh, Scearys?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
For, for clarification, who made the motion and who made the second?
LaFredo made the motion.
Oh, to table.
I don't think.
Mike made the motion to pass it. And he retracted that. So we took yours, Teresa's, a motion to table.
Sorry.
Who's seconded my, so we're moving to table it?
Yes.
And that's the one we're voting on. Who seconded that?
That was not my motion to table.
No, it was my motion, Mike. It was.
I understand. I understand.
Do we have a second on that?
Second. Second.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Teresa and a second by LaFredo to table the resolution.
Yes.
Where are we on the roll call?
Uh, we were at Mike, we were at Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is 6F. I don't know whether you all have it, but I think you all got it in the email. The resolution expressing council's support of the Diracchio Disaster Emergency Proclamation. Your motion to have council approve that?
No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Gereys?
Yes.
Thank you, Phil. Susan, you've got anything that you'd like to say on committee updates?
Um, just, we had a, a wonderful movie in the park night and watched Field of Dreams. And to say it went smoothly would be a lie, but with a lot of people's help, we were able to get the movie playing by, I don't know, 8:15, 8:30. So want to thank Edie and Joseph and Lauren and her husband and everybody else who kind of chipped in when we needed the help. And Public Works came out to help us. So that was much appreciated. I know in economic development, we will be, we're, we've been working on the Economic Development Grant and removal from that, that should have been taking place when the tax abatement was put into place, but it was not. So waiting to hear back on when that will be decided and taken care of. And I think that's about all.
Have an MPO meeting on Thursday and then our continued conversations about the optimization study through DART on Friday and then another DART commission meeting on the first.
Michael Frado?
Yes, I have a couple of things to say. We do have a Public Works meeting scheduled for the 26th. Correct me, Mike and Dalton if I
Correct.
Taking that wrong. Okay, so I think the major, major issue at that point, at that point was the, was the possible mediation of the flooding potential. And then I just want to make this, this is not, it's me, just for me. I guess everything is just for me now. It, it's that I want to commend the mayor because everywhere I went, he was around there. And so he was, he was very active as he was during the flood that we had earlier, a couple of years ago, or whatever it's been. And, and so I want to, I want to commend him for that. I call him the disaster czar. And because he, that's what I think he's proven to be. So anyway, Dave, thank you. And that is the extent of my report.
Mike Jones?
Nothing further. I guess Travis isn't on. I was going to say, I saw that he had passed a number of courses and was going to say congratulations to him. Maybe you can just pass that along, Mark.
Yes, I will do that.
Hey, Teresa?
Um, a couple of things. Metro Waste is on Wednesday. I'm sure we'll get a full update on the disaster pickup and what's happening on that space from them. If there's anything to report on, I'll send you an email on that. If there's anything to report on, I'll send you an email on that. Chad and I are meeting to reassess and reengage the public safety committee. It's kind of been out of sorts since COVID. And so we're doing that on Thursday with hopes to have them back up and running in the next couple of weeks. And one of the things that we'll be focusing on is disaster communications and planning for, for the community. Because we clearly don't have a good plan. Um, we also wanted to double check and get some sort of an update on the MetroNet communication. There were some emails. It's not been on the agenda. That is essentially what I think was asked for. And so if somebody can, Mark or Dave or Dalton or whoever's appropriate, give us an update on the MetroNet piece, that would be great.
At this point in time, the update on that is the memo for random, memorandum for record that I sent out. Latest information that I have from all of the other people, Davenport, Bettendorf, uh, and Veda and Ames, those that have the wires and stuff up. They survived them very well. From the storm damage from this trade line wind that went through. They not have much damage at all, so they're up and working, which is good to hear. We have another meeting with them, I believe, later on this week. And as soon as we get some more information, uh, we'll let you know. Urbendale has approved it and there's been some discussion about that West Des Moines may be on the wrong track with their Google Fiber. So there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, but that's all of what we know at this point in time.
Um, so the, the, I, I'm not sure what I just took from what you said, other than we have a scheduled meeting. And what's the goal or the agenda for that scheduled meeting?
They will give us a, a letter pertaining to their, uh, what do you call it? Kind of acceptance, um, their legal letter that we will get from them and then prepare it and send it off to legal and then bring it back for you folks. I anticipate that we will sit, approve them to do, put the internet, fiber internet in the city. They're, they're intending to send us a draft agreement. And hopefully that, hopefully that can get on the next agenda.
Very good. One of the things I'd asked for back in February was to have them on the agenda. At what point in time can we get them on the agenda so they can actually present? And we can have an understanding of what they have to offer and what they do and how it works and all of those sorts of things. I had that because I had the opportunity to sit down with them because I brought them to the community. But I'm wondering, I would like that to be shared with the rest of the council and anybody else who has an interest from the community. So when, I guess that's my question is, is before we have an agreement for us to vote up or down, can we, I'd, I'd like everybody to understand what it is or, and who this organization is.
Well, I think the intention is to have the agreement so then you have something to look at. So that when they make a presentation, you know what they are intending to do with it. That's the concept.
And that'll be at the same time.
If you have any questions on that MFR, call me.
So my question is. I'm sorry, so my question is, are, are, are we specific? I, I guess what I, what I'm, I guess maybe not a question, but a, uh, uh, what I'd like them to do is give, give a presentation. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that they understand, because I know with the last contractor, that didn't happen. So I want to make sure it's clear and understood that we're asking them to go, come in and give a presentation. So that way, um, not only are citizens and, and our residents and our, and our, in the council, understand, um, what, who they are and what they do and how it will work. Um, so I want to make sure that that's the presentation that we're asking them to provide before we would approve, um, an agreement with them.
You will make the.
Mark, you got anything to say? Work is continuing and attempted to close out the last of the three outstanding construction projects from several years ago. I believe that Aaron and Justin are continuing to communicate with the contractor on that issue. I'm hoping to have something on the agenda for the next meeting regarding eliminating the economic development program that was used several years ago to partially fund a private property purchase on University Avenue. There doesn't seem to be any support among the council or the staff for continuing this program. That's all. I think the other reports are all in the packet. Debris pickup as of today, we picked up on seventy-six, seventy-seventh, seventy-eighth, seventy-ninth, eightieth and Lewin Drive. They have been cleared, first path of storm debris. There's one place that is left with quite a few trees on there. And the reason for that is they have not contacted the insurance company, gotten a verdict on that. So until they do, we are not removing it. But we have, they have our number. We've got several other locations in the area around Seventieth Street that they've moved additional debris out over the weekend. We will be picking that up and we will go to begin to do Seventieth, Seventy-third Street, both north and south tomorrow. And pick up those oddballs. Wednesday, we will be back over on College. There's about three more piles that we couldn't get to today because of the, uh, laying of the concrete. And that picker apparatus was in the way. So that's where we are and then we will start going east. Now, understand something. The wires that come down from both the power poles, media com and all of the other stuff are significantly lower on the east of Seventieth Street than what they have been over here and up on the seventy-sixth through seventy, through eightieth. So the movement of the claw will be a little bit slower. Friday, we had forty-one semi truck loads worth of debris out. And that was just between University and Hickman. Between seventieth and seventy-third and seventy-fourth and seventy-fifth. The approximate cost on those forty-one loads was a little over twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that will be coming out to you folks all in a update right after council meeting as I'm looking at what I need to say on that, so.
Thanks for the update.
We will be making more than one path. So I know that's been a question. There's been also a question of what, with the yard debris and everyone that I have talked to, I have told them that they can come to City Hall and get five uh, of those tags that we're paying for to break up their, the rest of the leaves and little twigs that we couldn't get picked up with the claw. But we're giving them ten. Ten stickers. We're, we're giving them, each property owner gets ten stickers at no charge. How many have we got given out right now? Whitney?
As of today, it's been a hundred and nine batches of ten.
So we have had good results with everybody understanding and coming in to pick that up. So, uh, I will have a little more of this information that you will get here just a little bit. So, um, don't have any more questions, uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
There was a second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Gerees?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you folks, have a good evening.